PM. And I'd like to call the Village Board meeting in round here to order. It's Monday, November twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. We will go to the roll call. Trustee Booker.
Here.
Trustee Owens. You're trustee Johnson present. Trustee Quirk. Yeah. Trustee Thompson here. President Montgomery here. And at this time, and for those of you, trustee Booker is virtual because he has a help channel on the day. So we want to get him that opportunity to speak. We want to ask you to join us. We do have a legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And are there any persons that's preparing to be heard?
There is not.
Okay. And then the next item on my agenda is elected officials to staff reports. And in my report, on the board, you will see that we received your resignation from trustee Emma Seacrest, who says is moving out of the village. I believe she may have already moved out of the village. And so that's why she is not here on tonight. I believe her last meeting was the November seventh meeting. And we do have her, we received her letter. So Tyler has it and it's in the records. Other than that, I don't know if there are any questions on any of the other staff reports that were submitted in the packet. If not, we will move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Consideration of amendments from November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. And then consideration of appointment for Alisa Radkowski to serve on parks and recs committee. And consideration of appointment for Nicole Monks to serve on the special events committee. We had some openings where people resigned. They did not complete their full term and we put it out. I think it went out in a tracker. I put it out on my Facebook page as well as a Facebook post, but it's a video. And so these are the applications we received. I believe Alissa was on our conference previous. And Nicole Monks might be on another committee, but.
She serves on Parks and Rec.
Okay, so. So anyway, is there, are there any questions about those trustee Quirk?
Karen, is Nicole resigning from Parks and Rec or is she going to serve on two committees?
Aye. Other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, we approve the consent agenda. Add it to A, B, and C as presented.
It's been moved by trustee Quirk and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve the consent agenda. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have the motion here. Thank you. Under new business, we have consideration or consider approval for the purchase of twenty twenty-three police body cameras. And I believe the chief is here to speak to that. And if we have any questions, I believe this went before the finance committee.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll give you a brief overview of my memo. Again, this is to go to the finance and public works committee on November ninth, approved by the committee. We've had body worn cameras since two thousand and eighteen. We've had a company called Axon Enterprise that's the provider of those body cameras. We are proposing that we continue with that program with that company. We did get two other bids in addition to Axon. If you see in the memo, the body worn camera quote compared to the other two companies, Axon and Motorola, that Axon body camera quote is higher. However, when you take into account the fleet cameras, the fleet cameras are in the squad cars. The body worn cameras are what's worn by the officers. Those need to be the same company because they work together. And you don't want two different vendors for a body camera and a fleet camera. So when you take into consideration, we'll have to upgrade those fleet cameras next year, two thousand twenty-four. And when you look at the total cost between the three companies, at the Axon cameras actually comes in the lowest by a thousand dollars. So while the body cameras are a bit higher, the overall cost would be lower, stick with the same company. I would also add that if we switch to any other company, there are going to be additional costs above what you see outlined in the memo due to the fact that we have to take the current video that we have, get that transferred over to the new system and some other additional costs may be incurred during that transfer. So I would request that we continue with the body cameras. I'll also point out that the district attorney's office also has what's called evidence.com from the same company, Axon. And we are able to share video directly to the DA's office through a portal through their system. And so it works flawlessly. And so we would request that we continue with the Axon and that we approve a five-year agreement with Axon.
Any questions, trustee Owens?
Second question. Now, do you communicate with other municipalities using this equipment?
We can share video with other agencies that have evidence.com, yes. It's not as typical, but if a fellow jurisdiction is investigating a similar crime, we may send that video to them for that purpose. But usually like the videos transferred to this DA's office is our primary transfer of video.
Trustee Quirk.
I have a question. I'm curious how the fleet cameras work with the body cameras. Like do they sync up timelines?
Correct.
And then archive timelines or something too?
Yes.
How that works?
Yes, and so what happens if an officer was in a squad car, turned their boots and lights on, the fleet camera turns on and their body camera also turns on. It's all connected through Bluetooth. Vice versa, if an officer's on a scene and they hit their body camera, all of the cameras that are in Bluetooth range turn on as well.
Oh, like in other squad cars?
Correct.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's very, it's a very good system. We have no issues with it. We do cloud storage, which everybody does nowadays. And so it's worked very well.
Other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the purchase of twenty twenty-three police body cameras with Axon Enterprise. Trustee Thompson.
I move that we approve of purchase agreement with Axon Body Cam.
Axon Enterprise?
Axon Enterprise.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Quirk to approve the purchase of body cam, body, police body cameras to Axon Enterprises. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have the motion here. Thank you. What I would also just use this as an opportunity, those of you that might be interested, the department does do drive-alongs. You just schedule and you can get to kind of see some of how this equipment works. Just kidding. The next item on my agenda is consideration for resolution number twenty-two hyphen sixteen assessing twenty twenty-three service charges for recycling and yard waste collection of residential units. This would be Matthew and no change in fees, but what would you like to?
Correct, so these next few items, B through R, K are going, or B through J are going to be our annual fees that we need to approve. There are no changes in fees that is through D, C, and E. So it's our own media hours and the entire recycling center that covers costs for our residential pickup, yard waste and use of the recycling center. And so that's how we're getting revenue, the recycling fund. And that is offset a little bit from state funding, which is typically about forty-three thousand dollars that the village receives in state aid.
Okay, any questions? Trustee Owens.
This is a right place to recognize what we talk about like recycling. Trustee Johnson brought it up. And you had mentioned about, well, we had finance department, you know, more static stuff like that. Has there ever been anything done about just kind of like that? I mean, you still get the same service and everything and then I think the fees for the residents will be as much kind of like how you do it.
So that, that's a good question. Multiple municipalities have looked at that in the past. There is not one in the state aware of that contract, so a weekly collection. So it would be, that would be something that we would probably look into when we go through the just week collection cost and what that would do in the money. I think that would be a discussion for later date, but yes, that would ultimately come out of this sort of fund.
Other questions? If not, we need approval for this resolution. But, yes, but so we need a motion in a second. And then just so you know, each one of these resolutions, we have to go through the roll call. But I do have a suggestion for part of it. Trustee Quirk.
If everyone is in agreement, can we approve B, C, and D? Because there's no change to any of the fees or rates.
We could, but I, because we have new people who have not been here, just in case they have questions like trustee Owens. But the others are, and we'll get to that, E through J, which I don't like. We may need to approve that. Are you unanimous?
E, C, and D don't have any changes though.
E, C, and D.
E, C, and D.
Right.
We have no changes to these.
Right. But I'm just saying that they may ask a question that I'd like to get to consideration. So can we approve the resolution? A motion to approve the resolution twenty-two hyphen sixteen. Trustee Owens.
I move we approve resolution number twenty-two dash sixteen, assess the twenty twenty-three charges for recycling and yard waste collection.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
It's been moved by trustee Owens and seconded by trustee Booker to approve the resolution twenty-two sixteen. And we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Booker.
Aye.
Trustee Owens. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Quirk.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson. President Montgomery. Resolution is approved. Thank you. The next resolution is consideration number twenty-two hyphen seventeen establishing stormwater rates for twenty twenty-three. And again, there's no change in fees, but I want to give an opportunity if anyone has questions about what that is.
Next, cover a brief overview. So our stormwater utility that shows up on our utility bill, residents are charged a fee for one VRU. Commercial properties are potentially a little bit different based off of the property's surface. And so the village, we are under a permit with the DNR because we're a separate storm sewer system. And so there are some things that come along with that permit. And this covers costs of like street sweeping, our ditching projects, and our streaming stabilization projects that we do. No change.
Any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve number twenty-two seventeen establishing stormwater rates for twenty twenty-three.
I move approval for stormwater utility rate that will not change in twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve resolution number twenty-two seventeen establishing the water rates for twenty twenty-three. No change in the. Roll call vote. Trustee Booker.
Aye.
Trustee Owens. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Quirk.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
President Montgomery. Resolution approved. The next resolution is to consider resolution number twenty-two eighteen establishing sanitary sewer rates for twenty twenty-three. No change in fee. Matthew, you want to maybe give a brief?
Keep this one up again. So we are under permit with the DNR. We're operating our sanitary sewer utility. And there's again some things that come along with that. We have to make sure our sewers are clean, inspected, televised. And so our sewer technician Dana is out televising and then our cleaning and then televising and then problems come back to me. And we put up projects typically right now with the what's called CIPP line. It's a pipeline. We're focusing on two of our problem areas in the Greenwall subdivision and then Bradley space subdivision, which is that southwest corner of the village by the school. And so that's our main areas of focus right now, just along with some other spot repairs here. Overall, we're in good shape to include your CIPP rate, the DNR. No change in fee though.
Okay, any questions? If not, we need a motion to consider the resolution.
I move that we approve resolution twenty-two dash eighteen to establish sanitary sewer rate for twenty twenty-three. No change to fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Owens to approve resolution number twenty-two eighteen. We will do roll call. Trustee Booker.
Aye.
Trustee Owens. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Quirk.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
President Montgomery. Resolution number twenty-two eighteen has been approved. Now, we do have resolutions number E through J, which are all assessing the electric energy and maintenance costs of different areas of the village. I'd like to ask if we could have unanimous consent that we can approve all of these together. And it's so unanimous consent. Anybody object? Trustee Quirk.
Matthew, these are the ones that were already assessed, correct? This doesn't include the one that's unassessed.
Correct. Yep, these are the six normal lighting districts of the village. So we have the Brown Your Business Park, Cooper Park, the Armin Drive lighting district here, Park Plaza, which is over in the north subdivision. Hillview Court, and I need someone. Obus, Obus North, yes, thank you. So those are our six lighting districts. Obus North is that one that's kind of over by Culvers on Travers. Right. So yes, this is not included, which will come at a later date. Tyler and myself will do some analysis on that right before date for R. R, the one right now comes out with the jet. Right.
But the thought is that we're going to then bring them back on.
Correct.
Yeah, so I want to bring that to you as a board that's not part of the budget process for one event. So allow some education and opportunity for engagement for those properties that would be impacted. So that would be kind of like a quarter one of next year activity. And then once we get that worked out, that would give us time to prepare that for the twenty twenty-four budget.
And then we would have to do a public hearing and stuff too, right?
Yes, because we have a new assessment, yeah, so we.
We would mail out notices, let them know and bring up. That's, that's the main reason why I just didn't want to incorporate that in the budget process. You know, I don't want to give them ample time to know what impacts of that financially.
Any other questions? So there's no objection to us approving all of these as a package? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two nineteen, number twenty-two twenty, number twenty-two twenty-one, resolution twenty-two twenty-two, resolution twenty-two twenty-three, and resolution twenty-two twenty-four. Is your motion?
I make the motion that we approve items E through J assessing the electric energy and maintenance cost of the outlined on the street lighting systems.
Is. It's been moved by trustee Quirk and seconded by trustee Thompson to approve items E through J. We will do a roll call vote. Trustee Booker.
Aye.
Trustee Owens. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Quirk. Trustee Thompson. President Montgomery. Motion carries. Resolutions approved. The next item on our agenda is item K, considering, consider ordinance number twenty-two eleven, amending section sixty-two hyphen fifty-one C of the village code relating to no parking, no park in addition on the east side of North Deerwood Drive. Our roof place, eighty-seven forty-two North Deerwood Drive, southernmost driveway. And those that may not be familiar, this is the area where the bevy is on the east side of the street. On the west side, we have our new village park as well as landings. But on the east side, we also know there's some parking where Kurt shows down and any other businesses are. And I believe there's concern that people are parking on both sides of the street.
Right, so history here, in two thousand thirteen, the original building project was done. And so we had Kurt and Gutter on the streets prior to that. It was just kind of the CR pavement and the whole neighborhood was really on street parking law. After the project was completed, this segment in question was not designated for no parking because there just was a vacant Trelane Church property. And now that the bevy has been developed, we're getting some on-street folks that are parking there just during the day. But they're parking in the travel lane, so there is no space for parking to even really happen. It's a twelve-foot travel lane from the center line to the curb edge. And so we're just trying to avoid that. The bevy does have ample visitors parking, parking in their lot on site. And then furthermore, there is available parking immediately across the street on the west side, adjacent to Peabody's and Way West. And so we're just, it's, it's a few hours here and there. And so we had put up the permission from the chief temporary no parking site as there. We just kind of want to avoid any bachelor snowfalling issues. And really, there's just not space for them to be parking at all anyways. So we're just trying to officially put that into our code and eliminate that part.
And this is during the day.
It's just during the day, yeah, because all overnight parking on all built street, by those streets is restricted. All right, so it's just for like future, I think it's just for somebody coming home.
Correct. Trustee Quirk, you got a question?
No, I have no questions. So customers for the residents, you think, probably customers.
Yeah, I think it's either customers, it could be a combination. I mean, it's just kind of quick, you know? But like I said, there's ample parking across the street and there's designated parable spaces for them to be parked.
Any, trustee Thompson.
So you said that there was no interruption to parking for the visitors of the residents of the bevy. So you said there were.
Yeah, they programmed in when they were doing the bevy that they have spaces on their site for visitor parking. And if someone didn't want to go into the parking lot because there's those telephones going in front, if they wanted to just park more adjacent to there on the west side of the street, there's ample spaces. We have had the temporary no parking signs up for three weeks, maybe a month now is when they asked you. Three weeks or so. And have had no issues. And so people are obviously finding the correct places to park. And so we just want to make it official permanent.
So when you say no issues, there was no parking citation?
We haven't seen like any overflow or, you know, increased demand for parking because we took away those spaces where people were.
Parking citations, like from the. Where's the. Yeah, as you said, that you put the tipper in the parking area, so if they already have a parking area, they're like, okay, there's no parking.
Right, correct, yep. We haven't, as far as I know, that's a thing on yours or just it's a issue, so.
We're following the signs.
We're following the signs. I haven't seen anyone parking there. I'm frequent throughout Larry's and patrol, so I, I don't.
All right, any other questions? And as you can see in our packet, we have a listing of the maybe interested property places throughout the village that have the same type of restrictions or something similar. And this would just be added to that ordinance.
Correct, this would be added to ordinance. This is, if you go onto our village website and our court ordinance, it says tables. Let's get right in there, right?
If there are no other questions, can we entertain a motion to approve this ordinance amendment?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend. Consider okay. If I can make a motion that moves. Approve the no parking restrictions on North Deerwood Drive, amending table sixty-two dash fifty-one C of the village's no parking ordinance.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Quirk to approve the no parking restriction on North Deerwood Drive, amending table sixty-two hyphen fifty-one C of the village's no parking ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have the motion here. Thank you. The next item is to consider resolution number twenty-two hyphen twenty-five, terminated municipal court special revenue fund and the collection and use of North Shore municipal court fine, orbiters, terms, cost of any other revenues collected by the village ground deer branch of the North Shore Municipal Court to be included in the general fund. Tyler.
I'll say for a title. I submit a straight out action. With the budget, we mentioned how municipal court was set up for a few years as a special revenue fund. Part of the closed budgets to move that back into the general fund so we can use mainly the fines, orbiters, citations as, but we do to help subsidize some of the other general fund activities. So this is just something that we need to do to memorialize that action. So it's kind of, we want to do it in preparation with budget in case we decide not to, then we can adjust the budget accordingly. So this will also mean that we'll move the reserves, one of the fund balance of the special revenue fund over to the general fund, which is about a half million dollars. So that'll be a nice thing for the village.
Okay, any questions? And this was discussed back when we were talking about the budget.
This was in the, the budget session, my presentations, yeah.
If there are no questions, we need a a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-five.
You don't have to read the whole resolution, but.
Yeah. Resolution determining municipal court special revenue fund and the collection and use of North Shore Municipal Court fines, for return costs in any other revenue collected by the village ground deer branch of the North Shore Municipal Court to be included in the general fund.
Is there a second? It's been moved. It's been moved by trustee. It's been moved by trustee Johnson and second by trustee Owens to approve the resolution. So we will take a roll call vote. Trustee Booker?
Aye.
Trustee Owens, trustee Johnson, trustee Quirk, trustee Thompson, president Montgomery. Resolution twenty-two twenty-five has been approved. The next item is item number C M. Consider ordinance number twenty-two hundred twelve, amended section two hundred seventy-four, establishing salaries for village board elected officials. And we did have a big discussion about this a couple of weeks ago.
I'd be happy to, thank you president. And so during the budget session, one of the action items that is a vote asked for staff was to come with an ordinance that would address salaries for village board members. As we mentioned during that discussion, you can't determine your own salary, but once you're elected to a new term, those salaries would be able to kick in to provide you with some additional information on elected official salaries that provided that research in your packet to give you kind of a reference point. But based on your feedback, I tried to set up, or you have to do it by ordinance versus foremost, and set it up, the ordinance over the next ten years. That was a model that a few other of our Milwaukee municipalities have done. So now every year or three years, they're discussing elected official salaries. So those terms are in there. The currently in the ordinance, it states that the president should shall earn one and a half times the annual salary of the trustees. So I love that ratio in. And then trying to make a determination as far as how much we should increase salary. Some municipalities took a position that, you know, understanding it's a somewhat volunteer position. They didn't want to increase it too much out of public perception, so they would have a one percent increase built in. So that was what I used, but, you know, just wanted to put something on paper in case, you know, the board had something different to react to. So if you have any questions on the ordinance itself, I'll be happy to answer those. But wanted to put that forward for you and act upon it tonight, then in case it was rejected, we could propose amendment to the budget for the public hearing on December five.
And this is gonna, there's no increase in this budget?
It would be an increase for two of the trusted since they would be up for election.
Okay. Any questions? Trustee Booker?
Yeah, I just want to comment that I think that, I don't have a problem with the schedule, but I think that the amounts are too low. This is not something we'll be doing every year. Once we set this, this would be set in stone for a long time. I think that, and I think that the dollar amount is an arbitrary dollar amount that was determined, but I think it's too low. I think comparatively speaking, if we were comparison to Glendale in terms of the amount, that would make more sense to me. Either that or we need to do a study to determine what would be appropriate or not, but I think these are too low. And based on that, I can't support this. I don't have a problem with the structure or the way the ordinance is stated, but I think the dollar amount's too low. That's my opinion.
Any other discussion?
In terms of, you know, the dollar amount, how it's reached and then things like that.
Anyone else? Trustee Quirk?
My concern is that this this position always traditionally has been done out of love of the community and a desire to serve the public. And our salaries are right in the middle of the others that we got in our list to get our table. I, for a long time, a lot of trustees never even put their salary, they're just doing the job, trying not to impact the budget in any way. So I don't want to see the salary become motivation for someone to do this job. You know, they're just doing it as a side gig as opposed to doing it because they really want to be involved in ground deer decision making and think they can make a difference. So I am concerned with that it's, you know, maybe emphasis on money as opposed to service.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I definitely support the other trustees in favor of looking at an increase. I think the dollar amount that's listed, we're not a trustee, we're not a neighbor shop.
No.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with the increase or the terms that's set forth. But is there a dollar amount trustee Booker that you would possibly look at or trustee Owens that you could possibly suggest?
So like I said before, if you go back to the charts and look at the documents, that's listed in there. It talks about salaries of other trustees and municipalities. And I looked at Glendale's, which to me is comparative, comparatively speaking, in terms of size of population. And I looked at what they're getting, to me, it makes sense we would be somewhere comparable to them. And I didn't look to see what the, they don't have a board chair, but they do have a mayor. And I don't, I didn't really look at that, but I looked at what the trustees were getting. And again, even if we went to five thousand, I mean, I don't have a set dollar amount that I would say we'd want to go to. And it's not about, we're making too much money, because even if five thousand or seven thousand a year, that would not be a motivation for someone to run. I know it's not for me. I've been volunteering my whole career. But when I look at what, I mean, we have sat here, we have, as long as I've been on the board, we have approved salary increases, starting salaries. We're very competitive when it comes to hiring staff. But when it comes to compensation, even if it's just a stipend, to me, we're one of the lowest of all of the North Shore. And I think that needs to be addressed. And I'm not going to make, I'm not going to change my lifestyle over five thousand dollars a year. That's not going to happen. And that's not what I'm doing. That's not the motivation. But I think we should be looking at something more than two percent on thirty-six hundred dollars. I think that's, that's low, and I think these positions deserve more than that. I'm not going to get the the benefit of this change because it won't affect me. But in future, people that run, at least they could get something more than three hundred dollars a month. I think that's too low.
I would add, you know, when we take into consideration whatever the recommendation is, it's not always going to be apples to apples. You know, I don't know what Glendale's overall budget is. So we have to look at what our overall budget is within the village. And, you know, you don't want to set yourself up if you got something in place. And then two years down the road, you're not able to be able to do it because there's some major changes. I am good with what the recommendation is. Certainly, I know the time that I put in. And if it wasn't for money, I wouldn't be here. So it is not just love for communities, love for people, and love for service. And I do that, and not just the village of Ground Deer, but I volunteer in a lot of different capacities. So I think people that run for office run because they want to serve. If they were running to be paid for trustee positions, then you, you lost before you started because there's. So I get it, but whatever the board as a whole decides, you know, that's what we decide. But from my perspective, you know, this never came, came up in terms of, no, there are people that were here serving, but there's a lot going on. We've had, and I know over the last year, we've had a lot more meetings than we would normally have. And maybe engaged in a lot more activity, and that's just in the transition. But I think everybody has spoken unless somebody has something additionally want to say. Tyler?
There's one point, one point of clarity, because I was talking about one percent bump. But the point I need to clarify is that would be once the initial also of letter A for one and two going in place. So considering that no increase has been done since two thousand and ten, I kind of bet your what a general two to three percent bump over that time would be. So just, just to clarify, the fifty-four hundred for the president would go up to seventy-two hundred, and the thirty-six hundred for the trustee would go up to forty-eight hundred. And then once you have all new elected officials on a new term after this action, that's when the one percent were taken to effect. So I just, that was one point that is want to clarify. The second point is, you know, please know, when I was putting this together, there was no confirmation on the board where you wanted the numbers. I, please know, this is not, I don't even want this to be treated necessarily as a recommendation. I wanted to give you a template of what the ordinance would be structured. And I was trying to pick a number in the middle of the chart. And so, no, from my staff perspective, I would be more than happy wherever you want that number, we can make that work. So, but I don't want you to feel, it was difficult for me putting a number because I didn't want you to give perception that that's what I value. You're not allowed to be at the salary as a trustee because I would be happy to put that whatever.
So again, and keep in mind, as Tyler said, it's been ten years since there's been any increase. So, and we know a lot has changed in ten years. Any other communication?
Yes, I would like to make the recommendation that we change annual salary suggestion here forty-eight to fifty-four. To five thousand four hundred, there's annual salary that's starting in April of two thousand twenty-three. On their basis, it's about six hundred dollars.
Additional, including, you guys are aware of that?
Correct.
And then what after that? Because he has a ten-year recommendation.
I would suggest a two percent or two and a half percent increase.
And so the question is that Tyler would need to go back, or maybe go back and look and see based on our budget, because he gave us kind of a scale, what the impact would be.
Well, I mean, if, if, there's a few things. If you want to amend the ordinance, you still can, we can pass it tonight. If some of the board members did not want to vote on it until you have a more of analysis, we could defer, or give feedback, we can defer to December fifth. I can tell you that if you were to bump it up by, you know, six hundred dollars for the trustees, that would be about twelve hundred in staff salaries that line item would go up. And then there would be some FICA also incorporated that, but that would only be like a hundred. So really fiscal impact for next year's budget would be roughly about thirteen hundred dollars. So for two, yeah, so I can, I can tell you that analysis upfront. And but if you wanted to make that amendment, still pass it tonight and then just advise staff to, to change the dollar amounts based on the feedback or we let that, let's say that.
Oh, trustee Johnson?
Yes, I can report with that.
With?
This adjustment of the few of the dollar amounts tonight approved that, or if there's any additional changes. We can also, Tyler, move forward with additional changes if there's any additional changes other than today.
So I, just to clarify, I'm the president, so I heard an amendment to the trustee amount to fifty-four hundred, which would mean that we would do the math real quick, president, by May, so the seventy-two hundred would be amended to eighty-one hundred. And then for items or the amounts in two B through H, I would increase by, and then trustee Johnson, I would just need one clarification. He said two or two and a half, and I would just need a firm percentage, and I could do that computation after the amendment is approved.
Yeah, I was in two and a half.
Two and a half percent, okay.
I'm going to de-seed this in writing as opposed to just verbatim.
So there is a motion on the floor to amend the recommendation from forty-eight to fifty-four with the president going from seventy-two to eighty-one, and then additional each year two, two and a half percent. Is that correct, our trustee Johnson?
Yes, it is.
So that is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second, moved by trustee Johnson and seconded by trustee Booker. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So the motion here is, there is a recommendation to de-seed this in writing, Tyler, I believe you can do that.
I'd be happy to. I'll send it to the board so you can see the amendment version.
All right, thank you. The next item is discuss and consider process of one village trustee to continue term previously filled by Emily Seacrest. And I believe that is in our packet. And Tyler, I believe you took what we previously used when we had vacancies on the board. I believe maybe trustee Owens might have been the last person that came on under that process. Are there questions as it relates to, the process has been outlined in the the board packet? I believe trustee Seacrest would have, what, a year and?
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? Some of us have been to this process before, trustee Quirk?
As before, I believe we should give it up to the voters. We have a motion in April. It's easy to, to put an deceit on the ballot and give it up to the voters to make the decision as opposed to having six residents. We had seventy-three thousand voters this last time, something like that. I think seventy-three thousand people weighed on who trust you should be as better than that.
Any other comments? Trustee Owens?
So then if you wait for the next election and that person runs, then are they running as for a chairman of the band or are they?
Yes. Trustee, I mean trustee Tyler?
Yeah, so typically for municipalities who weigh, what would have happened is then there would be a third seat that is open. The first two who are elected, we get the full term. The third person elected would get, finish out that term, which at that point would be one year. So they would do one year, and if they would want to continue to serve, they would run again the following year to be elected to a full term.
Well, how would the voters vote?
It wouldn't, no, they would just vote for the, because there's three spots, they would vote for the three that they would want. And it would just be the three that get in, or the highest votes would be the ones at the point, but the lowest of three would get the one-year term.
Other questions?
Who have any questions? This is related to what we just approved earlier. Okay, two individuals coming on the board would get an increase, but if you now three individuals, because if you did some person or?
Uh, so, okay, so with the appointment, since they, and this, I might need some help in there. Because I, I believe as long as they did not vote on it, so it's like we appointed someone, they did the oath of office in January, would they, they would probably be eligible for the new salary if they did not hold on, is that correct? Or is that something, we would need to look more into?
More because they're completing the term.
They're completing Emily's term, she's not.
That's, that's one that I'm not, I'm not sure on. I think we're going to have to look into that question.
My guess is that there might be, I'm sorry. I, I've never, I've never come across that exact scenario, but my guess is there may very well be a term in opinion, I. If I had guessed the way they came on, it's probably that if a person was finishing out a former spot, even though they didn't vote on it, because it's the fulfillment that needs to exist, that it's probably they wouldn't have taken it to the next, you know, sort of, I believe my.
So even calculated to protect that.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, we'll still look into that so we can verify that's the case. That's a good question.
But for historically, the last, all the openings that have occurred when I've been on the board have been, you know, through this board, having processed, people came before the board, and we're going to be, uh, trustee Thompson.
Okay, so if we wait until April and let the citizens have a discussion, if the two trustee seats that are, uh, were elected in April go uncontested, what happens to that, that receipt that we were going to give to the person who got the lowest number of votes?
So, so let's say we decided to go to vote, and only two people run. Yeah, and you'd be the same scenario that, that if, like, your two seats only one person ran, right? Um, then it would be up to the board as far as how to fill that, which typically is either a special election or the, the appointment process and words. You know, typically, typically sets the board as far as how we perceive in that scenario.
You want me to put, okay, it's out.
Yeah, another, another situation that sometimes happens is like if you were to do this, and then three people ran for the spots, you know, then the question becomes like, okay, you know, because typically the voters would vote for all three, but sometimes what happens is they may only vote for one or two, right? So that would be kind of what would decide who would be the third person in that scenario. So.
Yeah, I think the person who gets the, this not always gets the.
At least a camera, yeah.
That's another comment. So based on that, I can basically vote for myself, not being a sole vote, I can still be on the board potentially. If I'm the vote getter. If it's three of you running, I only get one vote, I could, I will be on the board. I will be a trustee.
Yes.
Yeah. If you're on the board.
Yes.
Yeah, if you're on the board.
I don't, if it was a write-in or something.
And that has.
I didn't get on the board, I don't, I don't, that's a good question. If, if a write-in got five, and then puts it on the ballot, I got one.
Yeah.
If it was a write-in, if they were playing.
Yeah, I, I think that's right.
So the, if you have some, um, trustee Booker.
Yeah, I just want to give you my particular perspective on this is that, uh, I came in through, as some of you know, uh, I came in to fill Wanda's vacant seat, and I think it was about a year and a half, something like that. Uh, but if I would have had to run uh, do a campaign, which is costly, it's not cheap to do this, and then turn around a year later run again, uh, you, you're going to spend six, seven, eight thousand dollars to be a trustee to make three hundred dollars a month. That's what I keep coming back to, and I don't want to continue to, you know, talk about dollars and cents, but this is not, it's not cheap to run for office. So to me, to finish out the, the rest of Emily's term, just like, and I'm on the same uh, timetable as Emily, we both got elected at the same time. So I think there would be a year and some, person gets an opportunity to experience sitting in that chair, making those decisions, and determine if they truly want to commit to running a campaign, spending the money, so that they can get reelected a year and a half. I think it's an excellent way to get people that really want to serve to come in and see for something like that, that they want to do. It worked for me, and it worked for Ames and Wanda.
And who?
Wanda.
I didn't get one.
No, but you, you came in, and then a year later, you ran for chair.
And two years in a row.
Yeah, so.
No, I did two campaigns back to back.
Correct, that's right.
No, I never got appointed. Um, Gary Springen got appointed, who would have been on the board.
Well, we, okay, well, you came in, you ran a campaign, campaign, you got elected to trustee, and then you ran another campaign, uh, to become chair. That's what I meant.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so, but I'm not, you know, my perspective on this is, I'm not Wanda Montgomery. So for me, I, it cost me money to put that campaign together, to put a whole, uh, strategic plan in place, to get flyers out, uh, because I can't, you know, I'm not a real fundraiser. I've always been, I served, but I've not ever had to actually go out and campaign and raise money for a campaign. If for, for something, uh, for the village, that's, that's a large undertaking, and it costs money. I'm just saying, it, it does.
Other, um, okay, uh, any other? Trustee Corbin.
So from my perspective, the, you know, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one. In, in, in other words, the voters need to have a say in who serves on this board as opposed to the one person who may have to, you know, run again a year, a year later. Uh, I mean, they will have their, their, uh, yard signs already, you know, if they plan that correctly, and have no gates or anything on the sign, so, you know, running a year later is an inconvenience to the candidate, but I think it better serves the community to have a community weight on who is seated here and making decisions for them.
Trustee Thompson. What the process that we, that is put before us today is a process that we have used for the last several previous open seats.
Yes.
I understand.
Um, I don't know. Well, I'm not going to give it to that. Um, we will, uh, uh, is there a motion? Well, discuss and consider process. Is there a motion to move forward with this process? Trustee Thompson.
Um, I move to approve the plan just established by the staff in the middle granted to appointing the village trustee.
Uh, trustee Owens. It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Owens that we move forward with the process of appointing the village trustee to continue term previously filled by Emily Seacrest. Um, all those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed?
None.
It's been, um, this been approved with one, uh, objection, and that is, um, trustee Corbin. Motion here is, um, the next item on our agenda, item four, discuss twenty-twenty-one financial audit. And, uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I still, uh, on this, this was a, a request from a board member to get on. Uh, let me just give a, an update, uh, because Derek and I met with the auditors last week. Uh, they are about sixty percent of the way through the audit, uh, started in mid-October. They're on pace to finish a draft of the report sometime mid to late December, um, which I've asked by December, so I can share a report to follow you to be able to see. Um, so they are still on that timeline. Um, seeing what the December nineteenth village board agenda is going to look like, it's going to be a pretty long agenda, uh, just based on volunteer committee discussions, as well as, uh, village trustee interviews, it's going to be a longer meeting. Uh, so if there is a draft report, and would also make sure that you all have plenty of time to review that before we have a presentation. So with that being said, um, my plan is sometime in January for, uh, CLA to do a, a, a presentation to you as a board on the twenty-twenty-one audit, and then, uh, I guess I can also give that, a, a same update to the finance committee. Uh, so we may try to time that out, and they can give those updates, uh, on a proper timeline to both groups. Um, talking with trustee Owens, uh, we also just wanted to bring in to the board as far as board discussion about uh, initiating the NRP process in between, um, this and the next audit. Uh, we're going to have a tight window, that once they complete this audit, we'll make the next audit to start uh, probably sometime in March or April at the absolute latest, because we'll want to get back on the timeline for the audits being done by the summer. Um, so before they start, or someone starts the next audit, uh, you know, I think there's been a request for us to initiate NRP process, talking to Derek. Uh, he is, is open and supportive of us doing an NRP process to take a comprehensive review of our audit. So that's kind of just the update, um, that I wanted to tee up for all of you. I don't know if any of the trustees or just the boards in particular, I feel any comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in too, because, um, I spent over eighty years of my career as a, uh, as our manager of the mobile account. And we had a budget of building, uh, the audit was, was critical and crucial to our operation of the county. And it seems like when I came here, initially when I became trustee, I asked a question about the audit, or was it, and things like that, and the answer that I was given is, uh, well, we feel comfortable with the auditors that we have now. And I was like, well, that's not really an answer in terms of where you are financially. And it seemed like to me, and it was, I just use the analogy of a rusty can you just kick down the street, and that seems like what's been happening, you know, for a while. I know a lot of things have happened, um, you know, with different positions being changed and things like that, but it just seems like the audit took a backseat to everything, and I mean, we only have ten million dollars that we're talking about. And that's not a lot to really, um, you know, keep track of, especially if you got a billion dollars that I was dealing with. When I see stuff like that, it's like I have to bring that to, you know, bring that to attention, folks, but it just seems like it fell on thirty years. And if we as, uh, the village of Brown Bear want to go ahead, we got to know how we are financially. Because, you know, we're buying new everything, giving larger salaries and things like that, but if you don't know where you have a financial, you can't really afford to do some of those things. And that's what my concern is. I don't want the village of Brown Bear to get to a point where we can't afford to get new supply tires, or get the new, uh, equipment that they need, or get the new trucks and things like that, that we need to keep going, and we can't put that onus on the taxpayers. You can't keep giving, making the taxpayers uh, property taxes and things go up, because it's not going to be what we say it is, a good place to live, work, and play. If we don't know what our finances are, and that's what my concerns.
Do you know that? Other, uh, trustee Corbin.
So Tyler, the delay in this audit was due to, um, someone at the auditing company quitting, right? So it was sort of about several angels, I said.
They didn't start till October. Uh, so for them, you know, I can't speak to, let's take a step back, twenty-twenty, that audit took a really long time. Uh, there is, and honestly, there's some answers why I know why it took long, you know, I think there were some of, the reconciliations were not done correctly of the villages that had, and that took a really long time to be correct, um, to insulate the staff at that time. So I, just because I came in at ten thousand dollars, I can't speak to that, but as I stepped on, I mean, that audit process took like six months, and an audit process should not take six months. Um, you also want to start your audit process by, you know, March, April, so you can get it done by the summer. Uh, that's the typical timeline in the municipality. Russ, we were sixteen months behind on reconciliations. And, uh, an audit firm can't start their process until the agency has done the reconciliations. Otherwise, if you have them start, they're just going to turn it back to the organization to be like, you need to get this done. Um, so Derek, we had the, everyone remembers Tom, our, our interim finance director, was working twenty hours. Uh, he was just trying to keep us afloat during that transition. Derek started at the end of July, which was the time of the budget, uh, which we need to get done by a certain time. So, um, I told him we need to get the budget done right away, and then you need to go directly to the audit. So he was able to meet our timelines, get at least the reconciliations done, so they could start the audit process by mid-October. So I told, uh, basically Derek in CLA, I'm not having the audit done again outside of the given fiscal year. So moral of the story is, twenty-twenty audit was done in April. We're now going to get the twenty-twenty-one audit done in December, which is the four months improvement, and the goal that I've given for twenty-twenty-two's audit is we need at least another four-year improvement, so we're incrementally getting back to where it is. Um, and I'm talking with, with Derek and our finance team, they assured me that that timeline is, um, they're, they're appropriate and meets what they need. Um, so, but, so back to your question as far as CLA, um, the, 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 the absence, the person leaving, I think it's delayed it by about a week or maybe two. Um, so instead of maybe having a, a final report ready to go, I'm in December, I'm going to have a draft report um, that will be in the middle of their final review, doesn't change much during the final review. Um, but at least I'll have a final draft to be able to give you as a board, um, and, and have our staff with you by December. Um, so, you know, as far as the performance of the auditor, I'll be honest, I would want us to, you know, a few more audits to really have a good idea of how they're performing as an auditor firm, but I think talking with Derek, it seems like we first initiated that contract in twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen. So now that it's been about five or so years, I mean, that's, it's, it's never a bad thing after five or so years to review a contract. Um, you know, I might have a different thought of this was just initiated twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Because it was a contract, but being five years, it's not a bad practice to certainly do that.
Those one of those years, they went back, there was a new firm, so check that.
Well, before that, they, yeah, they had a new firm, which I can't remember who that firm was, but I think we've been with them for about five years now, CLA, not direct.
In between.
There's a one-year gap?
Yeah. Go back to the, okay.
Yeah, that's.
One-year gap?
They were going to a new company, but then they went back to CL, that company.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Okay.
I know one.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So there was, there was, oh, between, before twenty-seventeen, there was one year, and then even before that, they won CLA. Is that what you're talking about?
But no, CLA was not just the last five years. There was a different company. From my recollection, I think it was a different company that was in the middle of these last, because I haven't been on the four or five years.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy for us to pull up audit for that, and we will run that up quickly, so.
Trustee, uh, Booker.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really doesn't matter, but, uh, the reality was, there was a different audit team in there, and Susan went back to the audit team that you have now, because her analogy was she felt more comfortable working with that audit team, which is completely ridiculous to me, because the audit team is supposed to come in and take an independent look of what's going on and tell you what's happening. So that, that analogy should have never, but that's what happened. Susan felt comfortable with the auditors, and I can tell you, I've met with the auditors this afternoon uh, for about two hours, and we talked about the entire process. I concur with everything that Tyler is saying, and a lot of this had nothing to do with the current uh, staff that are there, but they inherited this, and now they're fared in a way through it, and I think they're doing a good job. I think, given, I would like to have tighter timetables. I'm used to like Amos, uh, a certain. uh a certain sequence of time, but when you look, working with a, a billion-dollar uh uh budget and many, many staff, it's easy to put those things together. Brown Bear doesn't have that. Uh so, you know, given that you got new staff that's coming in, they gotta get the lay of the land, and, and me tie timetables, I think they're doing a good job.
Just point of clarification, if someone's wondering why trustee Booker is talking about the audit for a while, that's part of our governance compliance during the audit. So anytime you do an audit, um they'll want to talk to an elected official, so as uh the chair of finance committee reached out to trustee Booker to see if he would want to be with the C L A. Typically, some point in the middle to the late part of the audit, that's typically what's done. So I just want to make sure for the record, people know why. Trustee Booker was talking about the auditors, so.
Yeah.
In summary, you're saying that we're gonna, you know, contract by April of next year?
Yeah, I, that's the goal. So in that, when we do Derek's or when I do Derek's performance evaluations goals, that's gonna be his number one goal. Um I know that's a, a high priority for everyone, and he knows it. One of the reasons why we hired him is because of his reconciliation skills are incredibly strong. Uh in a previous life or career, he was an auditor too, so he knows that perspective. So um he knows what it takes um to, to, to get us and, and I have full confidence in him to do that. Um and we'll be doing five-weekly check-ins to make sure he's on progress if it's to that point. But um to trust me, it's one, it's still never bad that if you're with someone for, you know, five, seven years to to go out to an RFP to, to consider, you can always keep the contract, but to, to just look at other options is never a bad thing, especially for um an auditing firm, which, you know, is a pretty significant uh contract for a municipality.
Quick question. Um in the period right now where they are looking at the village books, um your sense of it, is it better than twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one is about the same?
Um yeah, so it's, it's a I'd say it's about the same. I mean, I mean, as far as, I mean, there's some line items that you're gonna see that were overspent. And it's partially because throughout twenty-twenty-one, they still didn't have a good year-to-date. So another goal that Derek knows that I have for him is he needs to give a quarterly year-to-date updates for department heads, so they know where they're at with spending. Um so, you know, there's gonna be some of that, but all in all, and how it shakes up, I mean, in the end, it's, it's gonna be right around a hundred percent as far as what we levy versus spend. There's gonna be some years for municipality that slightly go over, there's some years that slightly go under. Um there's gonna be some line items, though, that when we kind of give the final audit, I'm not happy with where it was necessarily at, but there's always gonna be circumstances that happen that sometimes that needs to, but I don't, just not being around in twenty-twenty-one, I don't have that full idea of necessary requirements. But we'll, we'll be able to give that report to you as a board. The, the, the main things I really, especially when it comes to our movies rating, that I really want to be cognizant of is our rates, network issue, and geo that, you know, general funding. Those are gonna be the two main things that we really want to get attention to. Is it worth it? Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? This is really just discussion. Um so uh so many of us have been here for a little bit, so we know some challenges. I appreciate where we are in uh process of boards, which certainly have um hopefully staff understanding all those pocket budgets and, and track where they are. And it really be active, because it's hard to track, and you don't have active numbers in the first place. So I believe that includes our agenda items through O, and our next uh item uh number seven is to recess and close session. Pursuing Wisconsin stats nineteen point eight-five-one G for the following reason. To confirm a legal counsel, but the governmental body was rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and which it is or is likely to become involved. Pursue potential litigation against accurate appraisal of damages and administrative costs approved in files to the assessment era on the marketplace parcels. Is there a motion to uh go into closed session? Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Owens to go into closed session. Um all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? I have a motion here, so uh we want to turn off our.